We'd like to welcome everyone to our regular city council meeting tonight. We'll start with the roll call, please.
Bray.
Here.
Brown.
Here.
Johnston.
Here.
Moore.
Here.
Ford.
Here.
Glad.
We'll have the pledge of allegiance and if you'll remain standing afterwards, we have invocation being offered by Pastor Brian Griffin from the Pocatello Baptist Church.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let me just begin this evening by thanking the council for their invitation to come and to share and the invocation. It is a blessing to be a part of this community and to be here with you this evening. I'd also like to just express my appreciation to you all for seeking the Lord Jesus' presence in your meetings. And the Lord instructs us in 1 Timothy, Chapter 2, verse 1 through 4. "I exhorte therefore that first of all supplications, prayer, intercession, and giving events be made for all men, for kings and for all their authority, that we may lead quiet and peaceful lives in godliness and honesty; for this is good and acceptable on the side of God, our Savior, who will have all men to be saved and come unto the knowledge of the truth." Thank you for your obedience in this manner. Let's pray. Lord God, we, your servants, desire to lead a quiet and peaceful life in godliness and honesty. We ask now for your presence and spirit to be upon the leaders of our fine community. And may they, as well as all that you have set in place to rule over this blessed nation, may they be instructed as your heart instructs them. Lord, as you promised in 2 Chronicles, that if we shall humble ourselves, pray, and seek your face, and turn from our wicked ways, you will hear from heaven, forgive our sin, and heal our land, our land, this land that we hold so precious and dear. And as you lead these men and women, we may do so and instruct them through your holy word. And, Lord, we just pray that all would be subject unto the higher powers; for we understand there is no power but of God, and the power should be ordained of you. Lord, we pray not only for these, but for those that you have chosen to uphold this land and to protect its citizens. As we think now upon our military, our law enforcement, our firefighters, we pray for their safety and for their families. We pray that all the brave men and women that place their lives at stake, the lives of the citizenship, we pray that you would keep them in your good graces and by your protection. We pray that the heart would seek your counsel and when we begin here in our city and begin with these officials that you have established to rule over us. We ask these things not for our glory, but that you may glorify yourself through them and all the actions from each one of us. This we pray in the name of the only begotten Son, our Savior, precious Lord and only God, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Thanks Pastor. We move to agenda item number three, which is our consent agenda. The following business items may be approved by one motion and a vote. If any one member of the council so desires any matter, listed can be moved to a separate agenda item. A. Minutes: Council may wish to waive the oral reading of the minutes and approve the minutes of the June 9, 2016 special city council meeting, June 16, 2016 clarification of regular council meeting, and June 27, 2016 special city council meeting. B. Treasurers' Report: Council may wish to consider the treasurer's report for June showing cash and investments as of June 30, 2016. Joyce?
Good evening. Joyce Stroshine, Chief Financial Officer for the city. Tonight I'm presenting the treasurer's report for the month of June 2016. Total cash and cash equivalents represents 87 percent of the city's monies totaling $34,495,328. Total long-term investments represent 13 percent of city's monies, $5,319,847. Total cash, cash equivalents, and long-term investments are $39,815,176. This amount is down $3,439,565 for the month of June. On page two of the report, I've highlighted some key receipts that we received in this month. Transit grant, federal, $52,303. Transit grant, state of Idaho, $105,719. Idaho State liquor tax, $116,325. This amount is up 2.51 percent from fiscal year 15, which was $113,478. We received water lease revenue of $200,000. And the remaining section details the net change in cash and long-term investments for the month. On page three, the report is reporting on the trust funds. Total cash and cash equivalents for the trust funds total $660,275. Long-term investments total $5,865,616. Total cash, cash equivalents, and long-term investments are $6,525,891. Total cash receipts for the month are $172,101. Total cash disbursements are $58,971. And the net change in long-term investments was a $113,596 decrease. For an overall net change, a $466 decrease. The next page of the report, I report on the net change in fund balances and the balances for all funds. And I've highlighted the general fund at $3,915,779 at the end of June. Page four, or page five of the report is the discussion and analysis, which I've provided for your review. And the last page of the report is the five-year trend on our cash balances. And you'll see again that the general fund is at a positive $3,915,779. We have four funds that show negative balances. These are covered either by grant receivables, tax receivables, or an interfund transfer that's required. And so we are in good standing at the end of the month.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item C, Fort Hall Replica Commission Appointment. Council may wish to confirm the mayor's appointment of Sandra Rainey to serve as a member of the Fort Hall Replica Commission, filling a long-term vacancy. Ms. Rainey's term will begin July 22, 2016, and will expire July 22, 2020. D. Renewal Agreement: Delta Dental. Council may wish to consider an agreement with Delta Dental to provide dental insurance coverage to city employees for the 2017 fiscal year. The renewal agreement reflects a 5 percent increase in dental insurance premium rates. The new rates have been programmed in the fiscal year 2017 budget. Item E, Digitization, Digitization, I practiced, I told you. Digitization Contract with FamilySearch Marshall Public Library. Council may wish to approve a contract with FamilySearch, a nonprofit organization, to digitize the library's microfilm records of the Pocatello Tribune and Idaho State Journal dating from January 1875 to current. There is no cost to the city for this service.
Mr. Mayor, or Mr. Council President?
Yeah, we're not going to say mayor.
Okay. We approve the consent agendas, present.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Johnston and a second by Councilman Orr. Please call them. Did I say Orr?
Yeah.
Bray. That guy over there? Connie, please call the roll.
Johnston?
Yes.
Bray.
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Ford?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes. Agenda item number four. I should also announce that due to agenda item number 10, canceling the event, we will not be taking that up tonight. Agenda item number four, communications and proclamations. We don't have any proclamations tonight. And I don't see any scouts tonight. So we have agenda.
Oh, wait. We just got a point.
Right there. Well, would you please stand and tell us who you are, where you're from, and what you're working on?
I'm a chicken. I work as a chicken.
Great.
You're welcome.
Thank you. What tour, proposed or?
247.
Fantastic. Thanks for being here. Agenda item number five, calendar review. Council may wish to take this opportunity to inform other council members of upcoming meetings and events that should be called to their attention. Council meetings, July 28 at 9:00 a.m. is our budget development meeting. August 4, 6:00 p.m. is our regular council meeting. And August 11 at 9:00 a.m. is our study session. Other events that are occurring tonight, we have a peace vigil at 7 o'clock at Caldwell Park. Splash Dance at Ross Park Aquatic Complex will be tonight from 9 to 11:00 p.m. July 25, Lewis Street Bridge Project Information Meeting to be held at City Hall from 4 to 6 that evening. July 29, 30, and 31, POW MIA Awareness Rally and Motorcycle Rodeo at the Pocatello Raceway. Also a reminder that we have our summer concert series, the Pocatello Zoo Concerts and Open Air Art Festival, held each Saturday near the Ross Park Band Shell from 3 to 7. And the Ross Park Band Concerts held on Sunday evenings through August 7, 7:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. Through July 31, now through July 31, the Pocatello Neighborhood and Community Services Division seeks residents' input. Survey will help determine how the city will spend its share of community development block grant funds. Please complete a survey online, or paper copies are available at City Hall.
Mr. Council President, I would like to draw the attention of the audience and our community, the International Choral Festival that is taking place primarily at the Stevens Performing Arts Center tonight, Friday night and Saturday night, and tonight and tomorrow night in two other locations, you know which churches attended. It's really great. I went last night, absolutely fantastic. We have two young ladies from Thailand staying with us, and it's been a delightful experience.
Choirs from the Philippines last night, from Poland, from Missouri, and from...
Trinidad, Tobago.
The one that sang.
Georgia, Republic of Georgia.
Republic of Georgia. It's phenomenal, phenomenal. World-class, world-class choir.
Saturday night, all of the choirs will perform, so it'll be really awesome. Tickets are available at various locations.
One of, one of three worldwide that are still in existence here in Pocatello.
That have lasted more than two years. This is the eighth time, right?
Yeah. Thank you, Councilman Johnston. Agenda item number six, Taxi License Denial Appeal, Wigginton. Tony Wigginton will be present to appeal the decision of the police department staff which denied Ms. Wigginton a taxi cab license.
Councilmembers, Ralph Daniels with the Police Department. We denied this license based on the city ordinance barring an application be issued to somebody that has been charged with possession of controlled substance in '95, '99, and 2004, Ms. Wigginton was charged with those crimes, and that was the reason for the denial.
2009 was the last?
2004.
2004 was the last charge.
Yep.
Okay. Any questions? All right, thank you. Is Ms. Wigginton here? Okay. We have a motion.
Was she notified to attend tonight?
I would assume so.
I'm assuming.
I move we postpone action on this until Ms. Wigginton presents herself before the city council.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Johnston and a second by Councilman Moore. Connie, please call the roll.
Johnston?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Yes. Motion passes. Thank you. Agenda item number seven, Bid Agreement Historic Preservation Plan. Council may wish to consider the recommendations of staff for following the requests regarding preparation of a preservation plan Phase 1. A. Accept a bid from TAG Historical Research in the amount of $3,000 for the development of a historic preservation plan Phase 1. And if the bid is accepted, B. authorize the mayor to sign a professional service agreement with TAG Historical Research in the amount of $3,000, subject to legal department review. Funds for the preparation of the historic preservation plan Phase 1 are included in the fiscal year 2015 certified local government grant.
Mr. President, I move that we approve the bid agreement with stipulations A and B included and subject to legal department.
We have a motion by Councilman Bray and a second by Councilman Johnston. Any discussion? Connie, please call the roll.
Bray?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Ford?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes. Motion passes. Agenda item number eight, Exception Request for Beer/Wine Permit, Gravatt. Council may wish to consider granting a beer/wine permit to Melissa Gravatt for a family reunion at OK Ward Park on July 22, 2016, from 6:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. Ms. Gravatt has submitted an application to the city to allow the consumption of beer and wine at the event. Approval by council is necessary since this park is not specifically identified in City Code 12.36.060, where the consumption of such beverages is allowed.
Question, Council President?
Yes, sir.
Is there something in the application requirements? I guess my concern is, is this is saying July 22, which I believe is tomorrow. Is there something that, I mean, it'd be nice to have these applied for a little earlier, so if we have any concerns or questions, I mean, is Ms. Gravatt here?
I can certainly direct that request also to Mr. Bates.
Okay, I'd like to have that done, but please state your name and address for the...
Melissa Gravatt, Route 2 North, Box 55A, Chubbuck.
The reason we have a question here is, it's been brought to our attention by another council member also, that the proximity to the pavilion is fairly close to Brooklyn's playground.
Yes.
So I know this is short, short, short in time. Is there, is there a particular reason you chose OK Ward Park, or would there be a possibility of relocating?
Not necessarily. Guess we didn't think of that.
Okay.
Just the pavilion there.
Yeah, I understand. That's all I had.
So I guess I can add, can I ask another question?
Sure.
Well, based on that discussion, you know, we're generally pretty good about these, and I don't think we want to jam you up here the day before you think, but given our concerns about that, would you, if we authorized this for you, would you maybe put a little extra effort into making sure that?
Oh, yes.
You control, you know, what goes on there so we don't have an issue with it?
Sure.
Understand our concern?
Yes, I do.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you very much. We have a motion.
I really have a problem with it being in that location. Would it be impossible to transfer it to another park? Would that put an excess burden on you? I don't want to create a problem, but I...
If there's another place available.
Yeah, there is. Mr. Council John?
I'll make a motion.
John, which of the properties that are available where she could hold this?
Well, we don't have the shelters.
Yeah, I understand that.
Councilman Johnston, I am not, not sure at this time what other facilities might be available. We have to get with park staff tomorrow and check availability. Perhaps if she's agreeable, perhaps council can do a conditional approval of availability at another facility, or if not, go with the OK Ward Park.
Thank you. Mr. Moore?
Well, based on the fact that it's tomorrow, and logistically, I think that would be difficult in expressing our concerns about the location and that, and their extra vigilance and being careful about that, I would move that we authorize the exception. And I certainly understand Councilman Johnson's concern.
Yes, and in this case, I'm going to second that.
Okay.
Okay. But again, I think there's a couple of things here we need to direct staff to look at it more timely fashion in getting, you know, the application so that we can maybe address these issues going forward.
In the right of that provision that we're talking about, just make that part of the application. Is that what you suggested?
Right, and then maybe we choose not to have OK Park as part of that future.
And I agree with that, Council President. I just feel like we've kind of put her in a spot. She hasn't created, she hasn't created being in the spot with kind of the others.
Any further discussion? We have a motion by Councilman Moore and a second by Councilman Orr.
The basic motion is that we approve the location.
Right.
Because it's late. Yeah, time is...
I'm concerned that she's going to work extra hard for...
With the condition. Yes, is that correct?
Yeah, with the condition they monitor the playground.
Okay. Any further discussion? Connie, please call the roll.
Moore?
Yes.
Ford?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes. Motion passes. Thank you very much. Thank you for being here, Ms. Bray.
And we don't object at all, just that location.
Agenda item number nine, Temporary Road Closure and Open Container Waiver Request. Portonah Valley Brewing, Portonah Valley Brewing LLC, represented by Penny Nichols Pink, who used to sit on the city council, that doesn't say that, but who used to sit up here, is requesting to close the 600 block of South First Avenue, and is also asking for a waiver of city ordinance regarding open containers to allow the sale of beer and wine at a September 24, 2016 fundraiser for Pocatello Creek Ski Patrol. Portonah Valley Brewing is requesting that the streets be closed from noon until midnight for the event. If the open container ordinance is waived, it should be contingent upon the applicant meeting police department requirements and the appropriate catering permits being purchased.
Mr. Council President, I move that we approve the request.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Orr and a second by Councilman Johnston. Any further discussion?
I, I think before we vote on this, I would really like Penny to talk about the great benefit that this does for the ski patrol. You knew it was coming.
Sometimes yes, sometimes no. Penny Nichols Pink, 1849 East Pebble Drive, Inkham, Idaho. Thank you, Councilman Johnson, for giving me this opportunity. I think personally, first and foremost, one of the huge benefits that I see of this is that when I go ski at Pebble Creek, I have adult supervision, and they take very good care of me up there. I was able to get in 100-day ski season this year, and maybe one of these seasons I'll actually get really good at doing this too. So anyway, beyond that, we've been able to raise literally thousands of dollars a year for the Pebble Creek Ski Patrol. This is our 11th year doing this Oktoberfest, which is a great benefit for the ski patrol, and I would hope that it's a good community event for the community as well. Everybody seems to have a really good time with the event, and I know we certainly do as a staff. So I believe Pebble Creek Ski Patrol is one of the best-funded ski patrols in this area of the country, and it's been largely due to the great teamwork that we have between our staff, the ski patrol, the volunteers, and the wonderful men and women that serve up at our local skier. So thank you very much for your support.
Penny, just one thing.
Yes, sir.
When that's blocked off, do we have like concrete barriers? So I'm just really paranoid about trucks driving into people this last week.
Well, we don't have concrete barriers because we have to be able to reopen this street, but we close the street in the same manner that the street department would close it with barricades and road closure signs. So we work closely with Amerigo, and they provide all of the same street closure signs and partitions and what have you that we have for any other street closure in town. And...
I just wonder what it would cost to put up concrete barriers on both ends. Yeah, I'm just...
Short answer is, I don't know. I can tell you that on one side where we have it closed, we have a semi-truck parked across the street, which it provides the stage, and then oftentimes, Philmider Subaru provides sponsorship for the event, and they park a line of Subarus across the street next to the road closure signs. So if we can use Subarus in lieu of concrete...
That's fine. I just haven't attended the event. I just want protection.
Yeah, we can certainly do that, and we can make sure that they know that we have a council directive to provide...
Maybe throw a Ford or two. That's why it had to be Subaru.
Well, only whoever decides to help sponsor the event will get some of their cars out there on the street.
No, that's perfect.
Address your concern.
That's a very resolution.
Thank you very much.
All right, you're very welcome.
So as a reminder, we have a motion by Councilman Moore and a second by Councilman Johnston. Connie, please call the roll.
Moore?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Ford?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes. Council, agenda item number 10 has been pulled. Agenda item number 11, Exception Request Special Use Agreement POW MIA Awareness Rally. Council may wish to consider the following requests from Pocatello Raceway LLC, represented by Jerry Bailey, and POW MIA Awareness Rally, represented by Heidi Young, related to the 2016 POW MIA Awareness Rally. A. Consider a request from Pocatello Raceway LLC for an exception to the security bond conditions set forth by the city council at the May 5, 2016 regular council meeting. And B. authorize the mayor's signature on a special use agreement between the city of Pocatello, Pocatello Raceway LLC, and POW MIA Awareness Rally Corp. for an event to take place July 29, 30, and 31, 2016. At the Pocatello Raceway, wherein all costs associated with providing additional Pocatello police personnel arising from the POW MIA Awareness Rally will be borne by the POW MIA Awareness Rally Corps, thereby exempting Pocatello Raceway LLC from a financial obligation as specified under their lease agreement, Section 21, miscellaneous under subsection J, J5-6.
Mr. Council President?
Mr. Moore?
I'd move to approve both items, A and B.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Moore and a second by Councilman Johnston. Any further discussion?
Mr. Council President, I move to amend the motion by inserting the words that the mayor send a letter of thanks to the, to this group for their having supported our city through their participation here and attendance in past years.
Would you like to add that?
I'm okay with that.
Okay. Friendly amendment there. Any further discussion?
I have, I have a question because I should have asked this in the pre-agenda meeting, but I don't know what the lease agreement states in terms of the raceway, any financial obligation. Does that take away liability?
Well...
We said that they have liability, but does that take it away?
Financial liability from the raceway?
Mm-hmm.
I believe that does.
So there's no insurance?
Kirk, would you?
Talking about classes, you should send... It's only, it's only intended to remove the financial obligation that they may have to provide police support. So you need to see the documents itself rather than...
Yeah, that's what I don't see. And so my question is, essentially, we're transferring the financial liability in terms of costs incurred, but not liability.
That's right.
Do we need to caveat that in the motion in some way?
I think it addresses it in the agreement.
The agreement covers it.
Kirk, would you please identify who you are for the audience? We know who you are.
Pardon me. Madam Clerk? And the council. Mr. President, council members?
I'm Kirk Bybee in the legal department.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. You're on the hook.
Okay.
Any further discussion? All right. Motion by Councilman Moore and a second by Councilman Johnston. Connie, please call the roll.
Moore?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Ford? Yes.
Brown?
Brown? Yes. Motion passes. Agenda Item Number 12, Addendum to Lease Agreement for Budget Rent-A-Car Airport. Council may wish to approve and authorize the mayor to sign an addendum to the lease agreements between the city and Budget Rent-A-Car dated October 1, 2015, subject to legal department review. The addendum will allow for the rental of commercial trucks from the budget ticket counter inside the Pocatello Regional Airport Terminal, and storage of the truck in the leasing's vehicle service area. Budget will remit 8% of gross revenues from the commercial truck operations to the airport, which will be kept separate from the auto rental concession fee payments.
Mr. President?
Mr. Orr?
I would move that we authorize to the mayor to sign a letter of addendum upon legal review for all pertinent documents.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Orr and a second by Councilman Bray. Any further discussion? Connie, please call the roll.
Orr?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes. Motion passes. Agenda Item Number 13, Discussion Items. This time has been set aside here discussion items not listed on the agenda. Items which appear somewhere else on the agenda will not be discussed at this time. The council is not allowed to take any official action at this meeting on matters brought forward under this agenda item. Items will either be referred to the appropriate staff or scheduled on a subsequent agenda. You must sign in at the start of the meeting in order to be recognized. Please note, total time allotted for this item is 15 minutes with a maximum of 3 minutes per speaker. Our first person on the list is Nikki Tason.
Nikki Tason, 4963 Yellowstone, Chubbuck. The preamble of the Constitution states, "We, the people of the United States, in order to form a more perfect union, establish justice, ensure domestic tranquility, provide for the common defense, promote the general welfare, and secure the blessings of liberty to ourselves and our posterity, do ordain and establish this Constitution for the United States In Article 3, Section 3, it states, "Treason against the United States shall consist only in levying war against them or in allowing," sorry, adhering to their enemies, giving them aid and comfort. Article 4, Section 4, "The United States shall guarantee to every state in this union a republican form of government, and shall protect each of them against invasion on application of the legislature or of the executive when the legislature cannot be convened against domestic violence." Article 6 states, "This Constitution and the laws of the United States, which shall be made in pursuance thereof and all treaties made, or which shall be made, under the authority of the United States," which means we, the people, and Congress, "shall be the supreme law of the land." The First Amendment states, "Congress shall make no law respecting and establishment of religion or prohibiting the free exercise thereof, or abridging the freedom of speech or of the press, or of the right of the people peaceably to assemble and to petition the government for redress of grievances." And Amendment 5 states, "No person shall be deprived of life, liberty, or property without due process of the law, nor shall private property be taken for public use without just compensation." I am bound by this commandment from God, Section 98 of the Doctrine and Covenants. Now verily I say unto you, concerning the laws of the land, it is my will that my people should observe to do all things whatsoever I command them. And that law of the land which is constitutional, supporting that principle of freedom in maintaining rights and privileges, belongs to all mankind, and is justified before me. And as pertaining to the law of man, whatever is more or less than this cometh of evil. I, the Lord God, make you free therefore you are free indeed, and the law also maketh you free. And I give unto you a commandment, and ye shall forsake all evil and cleave unto all good, that ye shall live by every word which proceeded forth out of the mouth of God." I got statistics that I've quoted before in this meeting, you just approved a bunch of alcohol, including where children will be present, yet you questioned about Brooklyn's playground. Between the middle of January and the middle of March in the city of Pocatello, these are Pocatello Police Department statistics. There are 67 calls for domestic violence, 80 DUI, 45 juvenile abuse and neglect calls, 6 rape, and 2 suicide. The original oath of citizenship for the United States of America states, "I hereby declare on oath that I absolutely and entirely renounce my jer-
Nikki, thank you very much for participating in the public discourse tonight. Your time is done. Next person on the list is Mr. Sierra Carta.
To God and not communist-
Please sit down.
Go ahead.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a right to speak freely.
Please sit down. Please sit down and be quiet.
I'm Idaho Lorax.
Yes, sir. It's your time.
Idaho Lorax, that's what it says.
It's what it says, but according to the Secretary of State's office, your legal name is Sierra Carta, and for the transparency of the public, I think that's what we should call you tonight. Thank you.
Well, I have a meeting.
Your time now starts.
I have a meeting with them, so we will be rectifying that for a third time.
Let me know when that occurs. Until then, I will call you by your legal name.
That is my legal name.
Your time has started, sir.
That's what I'm saying. My name, my legal name, is Idaho Lorax.
Nope. Not according to the Secretary-
Hey, please, Steve.
Your time has started.
Stop interrupting me.
I'm not, I'm just explaining. Thank you.
I'm just saying my name.
So did I.
Stop interrupting me, please.
All right. Go for it.
Hi, Idaho Lorax, here to speak, to address the council. Yes, I am running for office here for State Senate for District 29, so please let me deal with the state of Idaho again.
I'll let you.
Okay. Otherwise, let's deal with the city of Pocatello, because I am one of the people who applied for the vacant city council position. I, running for office here for a city council position, do intend to run and help our city of Pocatello. I also duly submitted via other people because of the nature of protection for me and for people from harassment in this community by both governmental officials, agencies, and private citizens, that things were taken fair for of me, they were submitted. And regards to that, we also, as I believe publication is legal, for publicizing my application, I believe the Pocatello Valley Voice, U.S., publicized it, printed the application together with LUDS disease, so you all had some educational understanding of the mental retardation due in this community to heavy males of this nature. So, it was both an educational effort and an application for the city, and I have learned that somehow there were technical interferences or inappropriatenesses and/or whatever, because I don't have access to that directly because of the situations in Pocatello regarding my banishment still without due process. So, therefore, here we are in a situation that I don't know if it was intent, planned, or some technical glitch, but to make sure that wasn't going to be a problem, the Pocatello Valley Voice published my application. So, as we hope, that because it was a legal document published by an acceptable media here, that you will recognize it and maybe include it, or the mayor, in the selection of somebody, at least somebody who was running for office here to fill the vacancy, and maybe I can help educate all of you. So, that's all I have to say on that subject. The only other one, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Carta. We appreciate you participating in our discourse tonight. That concludes our agenda. Thank you for participating, and have a good evening.